Okay, it is six o'clock PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is to nominate a Board Chair. I'd like to open the floor for any nominations.
I'd like to nominate Lisa.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any other nominations? Okay, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Raise your hand for those who participate online.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Tom, you were opposed, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so congratulations, Lisa.
Thank you.
Turn it over to you, so thanks.
So the next would be a nomination for Vice Chair.
You've got to move up to the head of the class.
No, I know. I will nominate Mike. Is there a second?
Oh, Kristen Ross, I'll second.
Are there any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Congratulations, Mike. And the next nomination is for Clerk.
No.
Any Kristen Ross?
Is there a second? I'll second that. Are there any other nominations for Clerk? All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You're opposed here? Oh, okay.
No, aye.
Okay. All right. And then we have the remaining members of the Board. Tom, Nate, um...
Sarah.
Sarah. And I don't know... No, Kristen's off. So I don't know the two.
So Rebecca Gardner?
Oh, Jessica.
Jessica.
Jessica's there. Um, it would be Rebecca Gardner and Katie McWaters. I'm not seeing them digitally, but...
Okay.
I can't see everybody in the room that you're in, so...
Um, I see Jessica, but I don't see the other two.
Katie had emailed that she would not be able to make it in time, so...
Okay. Okay, so we'll just nominate them for everything else if they didn't make it. All right. Um, GRC SU voting members. Um, historically, we do one from each town, so, um, myself, Mike, and Kristen. Are there any objections?
I may need an alternate, depending on what day GRCSU meets, but...
So GRCSU is, um, third Wednesday, so it would be this week.
Yeah, that I can do just in the future coming up. My schedule's going to change dramatically, so I...
Okay.
But we'll figure that out when the time comes, so...
Okay. All right, regular meeting schedule, so everyone's good with the third Monday at 6:00 PM?
Um, starting in August, late August, I'm going to have a problem with Mondays that early. I probably will never be able to make it on time by 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Um, so if people were willing to think about pushing it a little bit later, um, I know that gets into longer meeting times later at night, but, um, I will be teaching two evening classes, um, Mondays and Tuesdays nights, so...
Okay.
I don't know that I'll be able to make it if we start right at 6:00.
All right, thoughts from the Board?
How late, do you think?
Probably just, my class ends at 6:00, so it would just be enough time for me to, like, get to a computer to... So maybe 6:30 I could do.
6:30, 6:15?
How about, uh, how about 6:15? A happy meet you in the middle. Okay.
I'll do my best.
Okay.
We'll see, we'll see how it goes. It's a ways away again, so...
Right. So are there any objections to changing it to a 6:15 start? Okay.
Does that start at an hour, Mr. Hason?
Hason.
Well, we would, we would start, um, yeah, we would start, like, next meeting would be 6:15 is what we would do, rather than make it... I think it's confusing if we say 6:00 till August, then August we start at 6:15. I don't know. I would, I would just say the next meeting, we start at 6:15. Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, and sometimes it's difficult to set the annual Board Retreat date tonight.
Make a motion to be announced.
Okay. So maybe we'll, um, we'll talk about that next meeting and kind of talk about what we want to do at that, and then, um, that would allow Chris to see if, if we need someone to come and help us or whatever, get that information. Um, the annual meeting is... Do you have that, Chris?
It would be the...
It'd be March or February.
No, it would be February.
Yeah, it's February, I just gave it one second. The vote is on the 7th, so I do believe it'll be on the 27th. 7th is the, the Monday prior to...
Okay.
So that'd be Monday, February 27th.
All right, so February 27th, 2023 would be our annual meeting.
Here.
Uh, yeah, so that would be something we could talk about, like, if we're doing it the same way as we did last year. I mean, and maybe we should, we should have spoke about that before, um, that everyone wants to continue with this option of meeting in person and hybrid or hybrid meetings, so people can be online or be here. Is everyone, um, comfortable with that? I think it seems to work better, that we have a better attendance. Okay, so we'll continue with hybrid meetings. Um, and we will continue to use Robert's Rules for small boards. Any objections to that? Everyone has, um, the VSBA, um, sheet in your pocket for Code of Ethics. Um, historically, we all sign date and hand that back in to the superintendent, so, um, if you want, if you're virtual, you could probably, um, just email that in.
Yeah, I could scan it, send it to Christine or myself.
Send it to Christine, okay. And identify locations where agendas and minutes will be posted. So historically, we post them at town office, schools, post office, library, and online. Any objections? And a motion to affirm the choice of our attorney. Our attorney is Chris Leopold, so would there be a motion? A motion would be in order to continue with Chris?
I'll make that motion, Kristen Ross.
And second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Seconded by Nate, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. And identify media sources, so this is where we would publish notices. Um, so I think historically, we've used the Rutland Herald just because of our stretch. Did you also, sometimes in Polley, there was Lakeside News that we also identified? So would you like to do Rutland Herald and Lakeside News?
Yeah, the Free Press, yep.
Okay.
What's it called, Free Press, or?
I think it's called, it's a free press, but it's called Lakeside News, right?
Yeah, um...
Or it's called something else now?
I think, but in big letters, I think it's like Free Press of, of Lakeside News or some, you know, I think that's what the outlet, I, I'm sure I have one I can look at if we can get the exact title.
Maybe you could just send it to Christine, so it could be recorded in the minutes.
Yep, I'll do that, okay.
Okay, and a motion would be in order to authorize the administration to request and expend available grant funds from the Agency of Education as well as the state and federal funds.
I'll make the motion.
Motion?
That motion?
Motion by Sarah, second. By Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And a motion would be in order to authorize the Board to borrow funds for the Unified Union School District pending receipt of payments from the State Education Fund.
Kristen Ross, I'll make that motion.
And second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Nate, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And a motion would be in order to authorize the Board Chair to sign director's orders and other documents on behalf of the Board as necessary.
Kristen Ross, I'll make that motion.
And second?
I'll second. Nope. Please hear me.
Lisa, did you want to add someone else, just in case you're not able to do it?
Um, we'll add Mike as Vice Chair. All those in favor?
Lisa's second.
Aye.
Sarah. Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, and so these are, um, subcommittees that we have. Um, so the, I'm just going to jump in. The Negotiations Committee, we're going to leave the same, so that would be Mike and I. And Policy Committee, um, Eric had requested we leave the same, and I'm not sure... I think Kristen Whitman was on Policy, right? So we would need someone else for Policy from here. And actually, it's good to have... Are you on it, Kristen Ross?
Yeah, I...
Okay.
I, um, I would be happy to have somebody else as well, since I'm going to GRCSU meetings too, so...
Okay.
It would be good. If, if there's other people interested, if not, I'll, I'll hang out, because I know Eric wanted sort of consistency.
Right.
And maybe I can trade off in the summer with somebody too.
So Nate, interested in the Policy Committee?
Yeah, I was just thinking I could help Kristen with that.
Okay. Anybody else? Sarah, Jessica?
Not this one.
Okay. All right.
I've got someone else.
Okay. We'll put, um, we'll put Nate and, um, I'll try to drop in until maybe the other two Polley people join, and maybe they'd like to, to join on to that, since that's kind of already a well-oiled policy, uh, committee, I mean. Um, the other one we don't have on here, Communication.
Communication's on there.
Is it, where is it?
Yeah. Number 13.
Oh, oh, down there underneath.
Yep.
Okay, so Communication, so that, Kristen Ross is Chair of that. And so do we have someone else that would like to, or other people that would like to? Because this is just a Quarry Valley, um...
Yeah, it's just for... It's been kind of, we've always had two Polley Board members on.
Yeah.
So, uh, and also, you know, other principals who, like, we have Joe Harrington and Kristen Kelly Jerry have been attending as well, which is great, so if there's other principals who are interested, that would also be helpful, um, and I'm, I'm happy to share the Chair.
Okay. Did you want to join that, Sarah?
Yeah, I'll jump in there.
Okay. Okay, anybody else?
I'm, I'm fine staying on for an ask, just for consistency too, since we're...
Jessica, are, are you interested in Communication or Policy?
Sorry. Um, no, I'll jump in time.
Okay. So we didn't, we didn't do Finance at the top. Last year, we didn't have a Finance Committee for, um, we did the budget as a whole, and I think we talked about even, um, starting budgets this year over the summer, so... And particularly having new Board members, I think it's better to do, um, budgeting as a Board. Um, we did talk about it the last meeting, though, um, having a Buildings and Ground Committee, and I think that's a good idea, as Louis spoke about, you know, we have the report coming out, and we do have some other things going on. Um, I'd like to ask Mike to chair that committee. And anybody else? Tom, would you like to be on that?
I'll be on that.
Okay. Somebody else? Nate?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. Great. Um, and then the other piece that we've, um, struggled with is having a rep to the Advisory Board for Stafford. They meet in the morning at like...
Like 8:30?
8:30. And I know last year I had, I had said, because we didn't have one, but it's really a rough time for me to, to join a meeting like that. And they are meeting virtually. Do they, do you anticipate they're moving to in-person, or they're going to stay virtual?
Uh, I anticipate staying virtual. It's a lot easier for people to get together.
Okay. So anybody interested in that? Mike?
We have a lot of kids that go to Stafford, so it seems like we should have, you know, a rep on there, and it seems like, um, more and more of our kids are actually looking to attend. Or do we have a couple people that maybe want to split it? Kristen?
Can you tell me again, that you said the time, but what's the day of the week, or does it vary?
It, it varies, Kristen. It's usually, uh, meet four times a year, um, so it's usually on a quarterly basis. Does not meet during the summer.
But they, their meetings last like a, a little while.
An hour. That's what they've been doing, so...
Okay. So you want me to put down Mike? And Kristen, would you like to be the alternate?
Yeah, I guess it'll depend on the, on the day of the week.
Okay.
Because of my teaching schedule, I, I'm usually starting around 9:30, so...
Okay.
If you want to put down double alternates, if that makes sense at all, I could share the alternate slot with Kristen, and we could figure that out.
So we'll do that. So if Mike isn't available, he'll reach out to, um, you guys to see if, if you can attend. Currently, Chris has just been attending, but, um, it is nice to have a Board member.
Yes.
And it's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that is that. So the next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as presented. Motion by Mike, second. Seconded by Tom.
I'll second.
Oh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. General public comment, is there any member of the public that would like to speak to an issue at this time? We have no one with us here at Central Office. Is there anyone joining us virtually that would like to speak? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to all the business. Is there any old business to come before the Board? New business, uh, Lisa Mattson, Coach's Presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to see you all. Um, I shared a document, I believe Christine forwarded to you, that has an overview of the coaching model. Um, and I'm, I'm not going to present it, just because visually, I don't think that's going to be helpful to people, but it should be, should be in your pocket. Um, and that gives an outline of, um, a number of different pieces of information about our current instructional coaching model. Um, we have currently four instructional coaches in GRCSU. Um, each of them serves roughly two schools on average. Um, some of the smaller schools share class three. Um, and the, there's a link to their webpage where there are bios and specific information about the background of each of the coaches that you're welcome to see. Um, also on that website, they have, um, information about some of the coaching services that are available to all of the GRCSU schools. Um, and that's in the Instructional Coaching Services section of that document. Um, it sort of just walks through the variety of things, from looking at student work or data to helping with planning, um, specific targeted professional development, co-teaching, classroom observations, technology, proficiency-based grading, resources, really, um, kind of the whole gamut of supports that you might need as a classroom teacher, um, and the, the different ways that they can come in to partner with a classroom teacher to support them in their work. Um, being, uh, working one-on-one and in small groups like PLCs with our classroom teachers, um, you know, is our goal for the majority of their time, to try and maximize that to the greatest extent possible. Um, definitely COVID has been a struggle with some of our teachers feeling kind of inundated and not having a whole lot of bandwidth for coaching and more. Um, but it has also opened doors that, um, you wouldn't necessarily have anticipated, um, and there are a lot of teachers who have built relationships with the coach, really utilized them well, um, during this period of time. I think technology was the first giant hurdle. Um, you were really sort of inundated with requests for, um, tech-specific assistance and support. Um, so the coaches have, have provided a lot of that, um, also in terms of, um, you kind of lesson planning and unit planning over the course of the week, um, giving options and stations to kids when we have kids in remote, um, for that hybrid instructional model. Um, all of those were, were big pieces. And then this past year, we've sort of seen things starting, starting to re-normalize again, um, and people really focused again on their, their pedagogy, their curriculum, um, instruction in the classroom with students live in front of them, maximizing things and, and carrying over a lot of the lessons learned from the pandemic and trying to, um, create more voice and choice for students and, um, meet students more where they are, at their level, within the classroom. Um, so a lot of requests for coaching, um, in that area. Um, another thing that the coaches can do and have done is support, um, the facilitation of meetings, either professional development meetings for a school at the direction and in consultation with a principal, um, or actually going in and helping with some of the school-based PLC teams or data teams that are meeting, um, and again, working with the principal to coordinate those agendas and, and helping with facilitation. Um, if a principal has a topic for professional development, usually related to their continuous improvement plan or something that they're seeing from their classroom observations that they would like to bring forward for all teachers, um, they can just reach out to a coach, either their building-based or a different coach, um, and they'll come right in and do a session for them right in the school, um, on any of the topics that they want. And I should have mentioned up top in the, the bios on the coaches and their webpage, one of the other pieces of information that they have on there is sort of their skill areas, um, and they try and keep that section of their webpage sort of updated, so, um, each of them, you know, they all have kind of general broad teaching and curriculum knowledge from their own classroom experience, um, but in addition to that, they all have different areas where they might have a special skill. Um, some of it is, you know, they might have a specific software platform or a specific, uh, grading technique, or an area like literacy that, um, has been a focus, or early ed, uh, primary grades, based on their own experience. So they keep those updated and share those with the teachers and the principals at the beginning of the year too, so that everyone can sort of see if there's someone who is an expert in something that they're trying to improve in their own craft, um, they can reach out to that person directly. Um, primarily, our coaches also, they're assigned to specific buildings for the year to help with scheduling and building relationships and people sort of becoming more of a part of the school culture. Um, but that said, they can also swap off, um, at any point in time. So, for example, if someone was really looking, Jenny Colty is, has been a preschool teacher, has worked very closely with the pre-K team, has a good understanding of VELLS from our Early Learning Standards and other matters affecting pre-K. So if there was a pre-K teacher in another building who really wanted some pre-K specific strategies or tools, um, we might have Jenny tag in to go work with them. Um, Alina has a lot of, Alina Wehave has a lot of high school science experience and science curriculum experience. So if there was a teacher in another school who was really trying to focus on something in a science area, we might tag out with Alina and have her go to support that individual, depending on, you know, the content and the context of that. So they do have those big assignments, um, usually, and can meet most of the needs in their buildings, um, that way, but we also have the flexibility that if there's something very specific someone's looking for, um, that we can try and get the most expert person available to them. And with virtual meetings, that's become a lot easier for us, um, as people have built that skill set over the last few years as well. Um, the final section of the document that I shared was other instructional leadership activities. So again, we're trying to maximize the amount of time that our coaches are working in the classroom with teachers, uh, but there are other leadership activities that they have across the Supervisory Union around instruction. They lead the new teacher orientation each summer, um, so they're some of the first people that our new teachers meet, and they try and bring them in and, and root them in what we're trying to accomplish in the GRCSU and, and all of the supports that are available for our new teachers to accomplish that, including our coaches. Um, they work on, with me, on all of the coordination of professional development sessions for GRCSU in-service days, um, anything related to a, a new initiative or an ongoing initiative where we're trying to do professional development across the SU. Um, they also create a whole host of self-directed modules. Um, if you have a chance to play around on their webpage, you'll be able to see them, but we have over 100 self-directed modules where a teacher can choose a topic for their study, can go in and have some new learning related to that topic. Some are videos, some are readings, um, looking at Google lesson plan, a variety of different resources, um, and then they have a guided application section where they can kind of take that new learning and actually apply it to a problem of practice in their classroom, um, and we can give them certificate hours for completing that work. And so, um, the coaches create modules, con, honestly, constantly, really, as they're getting requests from teachers. If they're getting the same request from two or three teachers for something, then they know that that, that's current and important. Um, and as they're pulling together resources, they will create a module so that any teacher can go through that during one of our professional development times. Um, they also, if they're doing a professional development session at a school, um, they will often take those resources and do the same thing. And when we offer sessions at in-service, you know, people have to kind of choose how they're going to spend their day, and we try and repeat some sessions throughout an in-service day, but you also want as much new content as you can, so, um, if they're doing an in-service session, a lot of times they'll record it, and then they'll turn that recording into a module so that if someone couldn't make it work with their schedule on that in-service day, they can still go participate in that morning at another time and benefit from the resources and the experience, um, that we offer during in-service. Um, our coaches work with our GRCSU-wide PLC meetings, helping to plan the agendas and follow up, and each of them are assigned to certain grade-level groups so that those groups have a point of contact, they know who to talk to with a question. Um, and the coaches spend a lot of time reading through their meeting notes, um, customizing an agenda for their next meeting based on exactly how far that group got, what their needs are, um, reaching out to members of the group to make sure that we understand, um, participating in those groups or facilitating those groups sometimes, or reaching out to our admin team to support facilitation. So they've really been trying to, um, start to make those conversations the kind of high-value professional time that we'd like to have across GRCSU. Um, this year, that focus was our curriculum work, um, and getting our PLCs through the process of identifying their core proficiencies. Um, coaches have supported and focused that all along. Um, and then there's a few other, you know, areas where they, um, participate. There, a lot of them are on the, um, school-level continuous improvement plan teams, and they support the principals, and facilitating some of those meetings, pulling together data, helping with the goal-setting process, um, and also can partner with principals around implementing their continuous improvement plans. So if a principal has a goal and they're trying to work toward it in the school, then the coach is trying to partner with them and help them advance the work of that goal from an instructional leadership perspective. Um, and they do a lot of other different, anything, again, anything that we've got going on where teachers are going to have to do something new, like when we convert... where teachers are going to have to do something new, like when we converted to jump rope for all of our schools this year and got those up and running, all of the schools that that was new for, the coaches have had a significant supporting role in making sure that we had training in place and support on an ongoing basis for teachers and who had to make that transition. And they're, you know, they serve on a lot of SU teams, a lot of pieces. They also have a weekly newsletter that they put out, which is, the target audience for that is teachers. And it communicates just important and relevant information. So if there's something coming up in the calendar and there are resources, for example, like a week of code is an example of that. So that's a big STEM week that happens every year where nationally people are trying to draw attention to STEM topics within the, the content of our curriculum. So the coaches usually will have in their newsletter, a lot of resources that teachers can use around our code week and STEM projects that would align with their content, their curriculum content, and also the theme for that week. They announce different professional opportunities within the GRC SU. They announce external opportunities for people. And they also refer them sometimes to modules. So if parent-teacher conferences are coming up or student-led conferences, you know, in the newsletter, they might highlight, you know, here are some resources around improving the quality of your student-led conferences or how to run student-led conferences. So they try and be timely and relevant for kind of what teachers need right now and reminding them of resources that are available to them to support that work. As I said, they coordinate with the principals a lot. Most of our coaches have like a standing monthly meeting with the building principal, really trying to support and advance the work that the school, whatever their, their goals for the year, their focus areas, the coaches are trying to help move kind of lock step with the principals in that piece. So that's a lot. They do a lot of things. They're, they're a great addition to our team and very busy people. I know that's a lot of information, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has or to speak further about anything that someone might want more information about.
So I have a couple of questions. Just even the way you were speaking about them and how it reads in the handout, it's a little confusing because it almost seems like coaches are quasi-administrators. And so my question to you is, where do you see them falling on the scale if they're in a building with the principal? And it is our expectation that the building principal is responsible for everything and everyone in the building. Where are coaches falling in that? Because listening to you and reading particularly the second page of your handout, it doesn't seem like that is your expectation.
I'm not quite sure what you mean by the last part of that question, but to, to address the first, our coaches are not evaluative. They, our principals are responsible for the supervision and evaluation of our teachers. They're responsible for going in, doing walkthroughs, giving people feedback on their practice. Our coaches are really the support piece. So if an area of practice is identified, either the, the teacher themselves knows that it's something that they want to grow at, or the principal gives a teacher feedback and says, you know, this is really an area that you need to work at, that's where our coaches come in. And then they can work sort of much more intensely with that individual on a coaching cycle to support them in improving that practice. So that's the, the difference there.
And so how are you evaluating then the effectiveness of the coach? And who's evaluating that? Because you're not in the building with them, it's building principals. Are building principals evaluating them?
It's actually something that we're working on at this moment in time. When this program was started prior to me, I don't think it was very clear kind of what the coaching role should be or how they would be evaluated. So I'm working with the coaching team this year to develop a performance evaluation system for our coaches to make sure that we're getting feedback from people in the buildings, because you're right, I'm not there, especially not every, for every interaction that happens, and trying to make sure that, that that loop keeps going. We have done some informal check-ins, like I've had meetings with principals, we've done mid-year meetings with coaches and principals, and really talking about the work and how it's being done and if there are things that can, can be improved or strengthened in our approach. And we also do a lot of feedback on the professional development that is offered at the SU level. So we get exit tickets from every session, people to give feedback on the entire professional development day. And we do some surveys and checkpoints for things like the PLC work or curriculum where we're kind of checking in with people at various intervals and trying to take that feedback to enhance the process. So lots of informal feedback, but we're trying to develop a more formal process. They, ultimately, the coaches report to me, so I, I am responsible for their performance evaluations, which we do in the spring each year.
All, all coaches are grant-funded?
Currently, all of our GRC SU coaches are grant-funded.
And should the funding go away, what would the expectation be of continuing these positions?
We would have to talk as the supervisory union about where that fit with our priorities and our remaining funds and what, what the resources and supports we would want to have be for, for everyone.
At, at this time, and this was kind of the premise of having this presentation, was to be able to provide or show some kind of data of the effectiveness of, of the coaches. And what I'm hearing and kind of reading through this is that there's not a way that that can be shared. And I guess part of my problem with this is that when I read particularly the second page, some of the things that you say coaches are doing appear to me to be what building principals' responsibilities. And the, some pieces seem to be your responsibility. And so, I mean, when I say, when I read like running jump rope reports for athletic eligibility, that seems like a strange thing for coaches to be doing. When I think of principals we have in upper-level buildings, I, I'm kind of perplexed why coaches would be doing that.
Yeah, so, and I, I'm sorry if the wording of that was not clear. And, and honestly, really, I, I did not come tonight thinking about data and I'm sorry if I missed the intent of this presentation, because there are, like I said, a lot of feedback that we have from different activities that have been done that could be shared in different ways. So, for example, for the, the jump rope report that you mentioned. So, and this is where I think the, the work of coaches in supporting our building admins and supporting our teaching team comes into play and that a lot of those things are, are connected or interrelated. So we had new schools, Polley High School, for example, that had never used the jump rope platform before this year. And so in the beginning of the year, getting that group up to speed on how to access the system, how to run the reports, doing that kind of level of training and, and technical support for the first couple, you know, weeks or months of the school year to make sure that that process was up and running and smooth, was something that our coaches who are very familiar with jump rope and jump rope reporting were able to support the administrators with. Eventually, again, they worked themselves out of that job and once those individuals knew how to do the things that, to run the reports and get at the data that was in the system and how the system worked to collect that, they no longer needed to be part of that process. So a lot of that is that handoff of responsibility. Or we, we drafted a jump rope expectations guide this fall to try and have more calibration and consistency around how people were using jump rope and scoring within jump rope. We drafted that over the summer, then shared it with the admins, bought feedback from the principals, refined the expectations and put them in place. So there's, there's some interchange in those roles in a lot of areas or places where we, we kind of tag in and out on different work.
Okay, so I guess those would simply just be one-offs. That, I mean, you're, you're talking about one building there. And how are coaches getting into classrooms? Are principals saying, like, Mike needs help with classroom management? And then is the coach going in there? Is Mike saying, I need help with classroom management and the coach is going in there? And what does that look like? I mean, could we have a coach? Because it looks like to me, coaches are only in buildings four days because for, it doesn't say why, but one day a week, they're here at central office. But there's no, it doesn't have an explanation why that is. So does that mean a coach could be in one room all day, one room all week? What does that look like? Or how do they get in there?
So there's a, a variety of different ways that they could get into a classroom. And primarily, it's either through conversations with principals about building specific goals or, or areas where there might be needs. And then there's also teachers reaching out to coaches. So they come in both ways. We, we do try to maintain confidentiality in the coaching program to a certain extent. We want teachers to feel comfortable coming to our coaches and saying, I'm not really confident about this and I need some help. And to do that, they really need to feel like the coach is not going to run to their principal and say, you know, so-and-so isn't doing a good job at this. So we do try and create that, that culture of trust between our coaches and our teachers. That said, you know, if a principal is having concerns with, in their monthly meeting they share with a coach, you know, we've got a couple new teachers this year, classroom management, especially after the pandemic with kids coming back kind of out of normal school routines for a while is an issue, can you get into some of the classrooms of our new teachers and take some, take some notes, give them some feedback, provide them some additional support? So there's that back and forth. We also, I encourage our principals to, when they're providing written feedback to teachers from an informal walkthrough or formal walkthrough process, if there's an area of improvement that they would then indicate to that teacher, you know, you really should try and reach out to an instructional coach and work on this practice. So there's a referral pipeline there. And then what the coaches are doing with the teachers, again, can really kind of vary. We have some, I have, I have one coach this year who's working with one individual who has never taught before and has never taught the content that they're responsible for before. And they are, you know, especially at the beginning of the year, they were meeting multiple hours a week preparing for that teaching experience and, and the coach was really very intensely focused with them. Most of our coaching cycles don't, don't look like that. There's usually a loop of, you know, coming in, hearing what the teacher is working on or talking through the problem of practice, developing, co-developing a plan for how the teacher's going to impact that. And then the coach going into the classroom and either co-teaching, modeling, observing and taking data and feedback for the teacher. Then they have a debrief meeting, they talk about how it went, what does the student work look like, have there been the improvements that they wanted to see, what's the next step? And then the coach will engage with them on that. So it could be once a week or twice a week for a period of time that a coach is working with an individual teacher on a specific area of practice. There's, there's a lot of different situations. So I would say on average, if you're looking at a, like a month-long cycle of a few planning meetings and a few teaching and co-teaching observation cycles, and there are some new teachers that have standing meetings with our coaches that are meeting with them, you know, every other week or so to just overall help with planning and support for instruction. So a lot of different kinds of structures that can look like.
All right, Kristy, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to Lisa. One thing that you said is, it sounds like coaches are doing a lot of the work with the principals and I want to make sure that is clearly stated, that is not accurate. And I'm, I'm speaking for my own building. I, I just don't, you know, I don't want it to be like you that coaches are doing what principals should be doing because that's not the case. And also just to kind of make sure my teachers know, like if they're in need of supports of some sort, I would definitely have them reach out to the coaches. I would never like copy a coach on an evaluation of another teacher just because that would cause a lot of distrust. So I just want to make sure that part was clear also because it can be very misleading, especially if teachers are watching this and they're thinking the coaches have accessed information about them. That's not the case. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I think the next piece for a follow-up for this presentation is that there needs to be some level of effectiveness of this program. And we've talked about it a few times and that's never come forward. So I, I think, in my opinion, particularly since it's a grant-funded position, and I know that they are, some teachers are tonight giving up their positions to stay in this position. So I, I think for that level of accountability, there needs to be. And I think also because they are grant-funded and if there is going to be at some point in time, the expectation that they could become SU-funded or even, we see how quickly grant-funded positions trickle down to be local budgets. We saw that, you know, the past couple of years and that has a huge impact. And we have to be able to justify, in my opinion, front-facing instructors versus instructors to instructors. And so those are things that need to be justifiable. So, you know, and, and I would like to see when we talk about effectiveness of the program, more on the teacher piece and less on the S U P D piece. I mean, for me personally, I think those are pieces that are just not exactly what we were thinking about when we were getting into this coaching, these coaching positions and as we brought more coaches on, that they were going to be in buildings, they were going to be working with our teachers, supporting teachers and improving, helping teachers improve in their classrooms. So for me personally, that's where I would like to see where the effectiveness and that data is showing that growth in our classrooms.
Great. I can, I'll keep working on that. We can, we can circle back around to this.
Okay, thank you. Any other, anyone else have questions?
I, I just want to make a comment that I, I haven't, in the last couple of months, but a while, a while ago, I did check out the websites and there are some interesting, it's nice to hear them talk about what they do and their roles too. So I would encourage folks to go look at their website. It helped me understand a little bit more their role too. And, you know, talking to building administrators is one thing, but also, you know, hearing from them sort of in a, in a, on their websites is kind of nice too. And so I just encourage folks to do that, especially new folks if they haven't looked into that yet, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, approval of the minutes of February 22nd. A motion would be in order to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike, second by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Approval of warrants, the warrants received through your SU email. All questions should be directed to Louis. A motion would be in order to approve the warrants as presented.
Kristen Ross, I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Second by Nate. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Superintendent's report, Chris?
Thanks, Lisa. A few items to discuss. The past three to four weeks have really been kind of centered on just dealing with the, you know, budgeting, the, the budget votes, the annual meetings, informational meetings. I do want to just say thank you to our Quarry Valley Board, the board members, to Louis and our Quarry Valley admins for all their hard work on prepping the budgets. I always said, there's that balance between being fiscally responsible as well as meeting the needs of our, our students. And I think, once again, I think all these individuals did an excellent job of that this year. So I just want to publicly say thank you to them. I also want to thank our admins and Louis for putting together budget presentations. It's, it's never fun, but I do think that does help get the message out to public in terms of where we're at. I know that just, you know, we finished winding down one budget vote where Louis and I have, you know, and other admins have already started begun discussion of next year's budget. So there really isn't much, you know, downtime. It really is, it's kind of a cyclical process and I think we're looking at to have more... And I think we're looking at to have more engaging discussions a little bit earlier this year, you know, really kind of take a look at making sure that, you know, our funds, our resources really are being properly used, maintained, and really in the best interest of our kids and support our staff as well. I would also like to thank the communities of Poltoni, Proctor, and West Rutland for their continued support of schools. I know that this is, it's been an interesting year, just with, you know, a little bit better than last year, but deal with COVID. And I know there's some political issues that kind of have been bubbled up that may have impacted votes in other SUs and other districts. But I just want to, you know, thank you to our communities for continuing to support our kids and just keeping our kids at the forefront of, you know, as they vote. So, just thank you for that. We do have S-Back assessments coming up. I know that we can, you know, the building administrators will touch upon that, but they start March 28th and to leave the windows through April 15th. We have a couple of other things. Masking, as we all know, mask, our GRCSU schools want mask optional as of March 14th. So, so far, so good. And, you know, but I've been saying this since we began this process. We really do take it one day at a time and just kind of see where we're at. But I think it was our staff and students were relieved, kind of be back at schools. Nice to see some smiling faces. I know that there were some staff members who had not seen me in person without a mask and vice versa. So, it's kind of was interesting. I, I think what was, I was in a school the other day and someone said, "It's like the first day of school," you know, for, for a lot of our students. And I also want to commend our, our staff and our students, as well as our families. Just, I think, there are a lot, there's been a lot of concern across the state around just how people handle being respectful of, of decision-making. And I've said all along, I have been very impressed with our communities as we have been dealing with a lot of highly contentious issues that this past week has been great. I think our students have been great with one another. Our, our staff have been very supportive. And I think it's, you know, we look to continue this through the spring and the early summer. A couple of things, I just want to, and Jay, I'm going to briefly touch upon this, but I'm not going to steal your thunder. But I do want to congratulate the West Rutland Girls Varsity Basketball Team. They, they, they won a thriller, as others say. But, you know, so congratulations to West Rutland Girls. It's great. I'm going to stop there because I know Jay can talk a little bit more about that. I do want to also commend Jay. I think he's been a very good sport. He has not given Jen Mclemore a hard time at all. I think he's been very gracious in the victory. So, I just want to commend him on that.
Well, they haven't spoke yet tonight.
But, but I said, I want to congratulate those girls. I think, I do want to say, I think, you know, and I said this to Jay and to Joe Harrington, you know, the past couple of years have been tough with, with, with West Rutland, how their season went with COVID. I think it's some unfortunate turns. I, while I like to see all of our schools do well, it was kind of nice to see West Rutland raise the state championship, you know. So, just congratulations to West Rutland. I also want to congratulate West Rutland teacher Brian Audette. On March 23rd, the UVM Outstanding Teachers Day. It's our annual celebration. He's being recognized. And Jay, if you're talking about this while I'm sorry, but, so he and Linda Mullen for Rutland Town were our two SU, you know, nominations representatives. So, I just want to say congratulations to Brian. Unfortunately, it will not be in person. It's still, will still be virtual. So, we will be posting the link on our GRCSU website tomorrow morning. So, if anybody would like to kind of, you know, tune in to see it, it is nice to, you know, say, support your, you know, staff and teachers. But I just want to congratulate Brian again on a great job, so. I also want to welcome Rebecca Gardner and Katie McWaters and just say congratulations, our newest members of the board. I know that, you know, they unfortunately cannot be here tonight, but we do look forward to working with them. So, I think that's really about it for tonight, right now, so. The packet really, oh, one last thing. The packet had a, just like I said, had the election results, but also a lot of information for legislative session. What's that? What's that? Yeah. And, you know, and I, and Tom, I just want to forget about you, but congratulations, Tom, on your reelection. Tom didn't hear me, but.
Did you hear that? What's that?
I just congratulated you on your reelection, Tom.
Yeah, hard run, nobody wanted it.
All right. Any questions for Chris? All right, moving on to principals reports. We'll start with the top of the pile, Poltoni Elementary.
Hi, everybody. You do have my written report. I would just like to add a couple of things. We did our seven mindset mid-year check-in with the folks from the company as well as the staff. And we're finding it to be very useful and meaningful in helping our students in social, in regards to social-emotional learning. So, we, at this point, we're looking for grant funding to support its continuation. We're hopeful that we can secure some funds to keep that going. We do have an update. We have actual spring concert dates in person. We're so excited. The pre-K through 2 kids will be performing on April 28th. And the third through sixth graders will be performing on May 4th. Not exactly sure what Mr. Olson's got planned yet, but it's just important to me that we have it on the books and we're going to be in person. Very exciting. Justin today as well, our sixth graders. The trip will, is planned to be to the Bronx Zoo. So, we just got information that they don't all need to be vaccinated. So, we'll be able to make that happen. I will have more information for you at a future meeting if you'd like it.
Okay. Questions?
That's it. Anyone have any questions?
All right, thank you. Poltoni High School, Joe.
Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of things to add to my board report that's there. We did have our coffee house, which is like a talent show on Thursday at the end of the day. It was amazing. We had our new music teacher, Mr. Ray, did a great job. The Tri-M Music Honor Society is the ones who sponsored it and organized the whole thing. One of our students, Gabe Weskit, was the emcee, did a phenomenal job. And I think he said it best when he got up there. He looked at everyone in the gym and said, "This is what it's supposed to be about. This is fun." You know, so it was great to, a lot of talent in that building too, students and adults. So, we had, it was really good. It was a great way to end a short week. So, appreciated them for helping out with that. Also, just want to say, jumping in on, our cheerleaders spent the week, Saturday down in Worcester, Mass. They participated in the New England's, they qualified for the New England's. They did a, actually, they did, they did better, they scored better down in New England's than they did at the States and they came in third at the States in their division. So, you know, hats off to them to go down there to compete against everybody down there. And it was a great, great experience for them. Also, I want to give a shout out to one of our other athletes who was, he was snowboarding for Poltoni, but he practiced with Mill River, Hagan McDermott, did a great job. He won one of the qualifiers. He, I was talking to him at the States. He said it was really icy and windy. Everyone was going a little fast. He had a blast though, he told me. So, you know, I always tell the kids, "We got experiences there." You know, we, even though we're a small school, we have all these experiences for you. So, it's great to see the kids get out there and being able to do those type of things. And just Melissa Christensen secured a grant from Hills and Hallows of the Vermont Community Foundation in the amount of $6,847. There's a community spring art show in May that we're a part of. So, you know, she's really worked hard with that. And plus, she also has, our students' artwork is down in several shows in the area. We have one down in Manchester and one up at the Chappie Center here in Rutland, so. Also, in my board report too, I just wanted to put in there, we finalized plans on our senior prom. It is May 21st. It is actually at one of the boats on Lake George. The students will be leaving the high school via bus. No one is driving down there. So, we'll do our lockdown at the high school and the kids will be going to the prom. And then our senior trip, our seniors have, they had a couple options and they chose. We're, actually, it's kind of perfect timing too because they'll be leaving. The prom is Saturday night. They're going to be leaving Sunday morning for a couple of days down in, they're going down to Ocean City, Maryland. So, I have, any questions on that? Be happy to answer those and.
So, did you provide an itinerary? Because you'd be looking for approval for the senior trips since it's an overnight out-of-state trip?
Yes, I do have an itinerary. I did not provide it in my board report, but I do have an itinerary, like I said, in there. If anyone, I can provide that for you.
What's the feeling of the board? Because it is out-of-state and overnight, that it needs board approval?
I agree.
So, is that a motion to approve, Nate?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second by Tom. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Maybe if you could just put the itinerary in your next board report, just so we could see it. So.
I'll send it, I'll send that up through Christine. I talked to her about it. She said just put it in the, so I'll make sure she has that for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, Proctor Elementary. Christine.
All right, good evening, everybody. You have my written report. Just to kind of follow up on field trips, the sixth graders will be headed to Boston this year, which is super exciting. They, I can send that itinerary along as well. But they've removed all restrictions in terms of vaccinations and things like that. So, all students can participate and they all bring one family member or a guest with them. Today, our three, four had their wax museum presentation. So, families could come in, check out what the kids are doing. Always interesting and exciting. Of course, we have a lot of sports heroes for that piece. We have parent-teacher conferences coming up on March 31st and he in April 1st. Students are dismissed at 11:30. We've been working really hard on continuing, working on our curriculum, working on aligning curriculum from elementary school through the high school. So, we have a committee that we meet with, both with elementary and high school folks on it, which I think is really important. Also, I know Chris will be talking about this as a resignation, but I have accepted another position in Rutland City as a principal of Northwest Primary School. So, I will be done June 30th. And I do sincerely thank everybody. It has been a fantastic place to work for the last 10 years. And it was really bittersweet because I do love the community in which I work with and I love my staff and my kids because I do treat them like my own kids and I appreciate all the support from the families. So, I'm going to end there with that. And if anybody has any questions, I'll.
All right, seeing none. I'll move on to Proctor High, Jen.
Good evening. You all received my report. I first want to just start off by thanking all the teachers on all their hard work. We've really been hitting the grindstone lately on our curriculum work and alignment. They have been really looking over their courses, finding out where their standards are, and then also looking 7th through 12th and collaborating with Proctor Elementary to make sure that our curriculum transitions nicely into high school. And that work's going to continue on next year, which I think is a really important thing that we start looking at the K through 12 curriculum. One of our students, Jada Perry, in seventh grade, was elected to participate in the Bernie Sanders Town Meeting. And she was one of six students that was nominated and chosen by Bernie Sanders himself to participate in that forum meeting. So, and she did an amazing job representing Proctor for us. And then recently, we've just been highlighting our seniors on our Facebook page, just kind of saying a little bit about them, their favorite memories. And then staff have been commenting and congratulating them as they start to transition out. We did a countdown the other day and I won't tell everyone because I have to show it to the students first, but you want to believe it's real close to the end for our seniors. So, don't be sad to see them go. Does anyone have any questions?
Mike has a question.
Jen, on your last page of your report there, it gives the enrollment. It shows last year of 2020. Is that correct or should that be 21?
That should be 21, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Moving on to Jay. Jay has a lot of congratulations on his first page, so.
Well, good evening, everybody. As everyone else, you have seen my report. I had actually recognized Brian Audette earlier this school year as our Teacher of the Year for UVM. But a heartfelt congratulations to Brian once again for that distinction. Again, want to thank or congratulate our Varsity Basketball Team for their state championship. It was a great game. If we're going to go back and forth with anybody, it's going to be Proctor and great sportsmanship on both sides. So, congratulations to them. Also, very cool, one of the things I had brought to West Rutland when I started there three years ago was the Scripps Spelling Bee. And believe it or not, we keep growing in size and, which is great. And Cade Barassa, who was a sixth grader, won it for the third year in a row, went to the state championship late last week, I think it was on Thursday, and made it through the fourth round. So, we're very proud of Cade and his accomplishments. He did remind me that seventh and eighth graders were there. So, there was a hint that he is planting a seed that he would like to continue this. I'm sure we can make this work for seventh and eighth graders for next year. We too also have a ton of concerts coming up that did not make the report. April 13th, High School and Middle School Concert at the Town Hall. On May 11th, a K2 Concert at the Town Hall. And on May 18th, a concert for the third to sixth graders. So, lots going on for them as well. You can see, we're working on a lot of stuff. I did put in that our, we have a very small senior class at West Rutland this year, probably the smallest we've had in a while. There are 15 of them. And at this point in time, we're looking at in-state day trips for them. And we've fully got going on graduation plans, et cetera, to have it back at the Henchy Gym for this year. So, there's lots of great things going on. The rest of it is in the report, but if you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer it.
What was that, second concert date, Jay?
Oh, Mike, you would ask. I'm sorry, I just closed that window.
You said it to me later.
Yeah, I can actually send it to you in an email. I apologize. I have all these tabs open on, and I was trying to, we have, we have one coming up in two weeks on May 13th and then there are, or on April 13th. And then there are few in May. So, I'll send those to you in an email, Mike.
All right, thank you. It is exciting to hear about all the concerts. So, community parents, grandparents can start coming back, being in the buildings and, and enjoying all the talent that we have within all of our buildings, so. All right, moving on to personnel. We have contracts before us for professional staff. We have Lisa Whitman for Poltoni Elementary, a .6 art teacher. Jay Fix, Proctor High School Science Teacher. Connor Patton, West Rutland High School English Teacher. Anthony Sawyer, Poltoni High School Global Citizen Teacher. Rachel Grinia, Proctor Elementary Teacher. Darren McIntyre, Proctor High School Summer Driver Ed. And Darren McIntyre, Quarry Valley Drivers Ed for next year. You see behind some of them, they say rehire. It's my understanding that's because they were hired after.
So, yeah, as part of the master agreement, any employee that's hired after June 15th goes on to a, on one, like a one-year contract where they have to basically just go through the process of reapplying and then go through. So, next year, they just would move through the normal contract cycles with other teachers.
Okay. Any questions on professional staff? All right, moving on to support staff. Andrew Elrich at Proctor High for a custodian substitute. Extracurricular, Brian Debonis, Poltoni High School Varsity Baseball Coach. Carol Ryan, Proctor Elementary Boys Basketball 5'6". Carol Ryan, Proctor Elementary Girls Basketball 5'6". Robert, I'm not even going to try the last name. Poltoni High School JV Baseball Coach. Craig Hunt, Poltoni High School Junior Varsity Softball Coach. Any questions on those? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to approve as presented.
Kristen Ross, so moved.
Second.
A second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Also in your pocket, we have a number of resignations this evening. Also in your packet, we have a number of resignations this evening. The first one is Kristy Cluthy, Proctor Elementary principal. Alina Weehoff, Proctor High School science teacher. Sloan Weinberg, Poltoni Element, or Proctor Elementary, I'm sorry, teacher. Lindsay Ryder, Proctor Elementary literacy coach. Anna Retirement, Janet Chandler, Poltoni High School teacher. You'll see that three of them had taken a year of absence to take positions at the GRCSU, and they're now resigning their positions to stay at the GRCSU. Any questions? Hearing none, a motion would be in order to accept the resignations as presented. We're not going to be able to accept them, Kristy, because your name is on there.
I think we're fine.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike, second?
Kristen Ross, I'll second with regret.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. You also have in your packet the vacancies across the district, just for your reference. Moving on to committee reports, Communication Committee, do you have a report, Kristen?
No, we meet next week, so I'll have an update in next month.
Okay. We have several policies for first read this evening. So the first is D8, Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act compliance. D9, Family Medical Leave. E3, Tobacco Prohibitation. E5, Travel Reimbursement. G7, Educational Support System. G8, Grade Advancement, Retention, Promotion, and Acceleration of Students. F14, Participation of Home Studies Students. F9, Admission of Non-Resident Tuition Students. Special Education. C3, School Visits by Board Members. D2, Professional Development. And E1, Safety, Security of School Facilities. So those are all first reads. And I think kind of what we had decided maybe at the SU, if you have concerns or questions about these on the first read, it's good to join the Policy Committee meeting or to send your concerns about the policy to Eric, who is the board, or who is the committee chair. Moving on to finance, Louis?
Good evening, everyone. So in addition to the printouts that were in the packet for the financials, I have one other item on the top, for topic tonight, and that's the audit. So at the end of last week, we received the audit back from our auditors for FY '21. And today, the full audit was emailed to the board as well as a two-page management letter. If you have, after you've had a chance to review the full audit and you have any questions, feel free to let me know. There was no changes to our finances, the surplus as reported at the end of fiscal year remains the same, there's no adjustments to any of the numbers that were provided. However, there were three items that were listed as findings in the management letter, and I'll briefly go through those. So the first one relates to GASB ED4, and this is a new requirement. So currently, our student activities accounts, the checks are processed at the school level. So usually, the front office is cutting those checks, and then the principals are signing them and mailing them out, and the schools manage those accounts. We do review them at central office periodically, and they are included in our audit. But typically, the board is not seeing those expenses. As part of GASB ED4, it's required that warrants be produced on a regular basis and sent to the board for review and approval. So like you, like every month now, you get warrants with all of the checks that we're cutting out of the general fund. Starting in April, we'll be including warrants for the student activities accounts as well. So you'll see a separate warrant for each school with a list of all the checks that the school cut for that month. So, and the board will do the same thing, they'll just review those, read them into the minutes, and then the board chair will be asked to sign those like the other warrants are signed. Any questions on that one?
So is that a change, that's a change from last year, that's not really a...
This is, that is a change, it's a new requirement.
Okay, so that's not a negative against us, that's just making sure we're aware of that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The second item, I'm actually going to skip to the third item, just because it relates to student activities as well, and then I'll come back to the second item. So the third item, in regards to student activities, as they review the invoices, they do, they take a sample of all of the dispersments and receipts. And based on their review of the accounts, they're finding that there's not enough documentation to support the dispersments. So they were just recommending that the schools, as they're cutting the checks, to make sure that there's enough and proper documentation to support the expense. So invoices, approvals, receipts, whatever is necessary so that when they pull a check, there's all the documentation that shows why that check was cut, and who it was cut to, and what it was for. And then the last item is purchase order procedures. So currently, we have a procedure in place that requires that a PO be done in advance before any expenses are incurred. There are a few exceptions, such as items like utilities, things that we're paying every month on a regular basis, some contracted services, Kelly Services, stuff where a PO really can't be done in advance. But items like we're purchasing items from Amazon, or School Specialty, or Graphic Edge, or any other businesses, we're actually ordering supplies, it is required that a PO be done in advance. And based on that random selection, they're finding many occasions where POs are not being done before the purchase is made. And this is happening in all schools across the SU. It's been an ongoing issue, actually, since I've always been a business manager, I've always had these issues. And we work on compliance every year, and retraining front office staff and principals and other people that are doing purchasing, to make sure that they're complying with the procedure. And it's just an ongoing effort to make, to educate and make sure that there's compliance. But we continue to have struggles getting everybody, getting 100% compliance on it.
Okay. Questions for Louis about that?
Sorry, I don't have a specific question, but just wondering, I know that Seth Howard was looking at warrants. Do we need to have somebody fill that spot, or is that going to be you, Lisa?
So warrants, the warrants come to all of us through our GRCSU email. So once Lori or, I can't remember the other...
It was Kathy and Heather.
Heather, send them to us. I wait 24 hours to see if questions have been sent. And then Lori and Heather reach out for approval for that, so... But everyone receives the warrant, so anyone and everyone should be reading through them. And if you have a question, you should be emailing Louis and asking for clarification on the warrant prior to coming to this meeting. Because warrant, I would have given approval for warrants prior to coming, so...
I just, I thought Seth was doing another step of assigning something, but I, yeah.
No, so once, once we started with the pandemic, we weren't coming in and going through them. Like, I mean, if you come in, there's a file that has all the invoices and like that on that. If you're actually reading through the warrants, I mean, I read through them every time we get them. I don't think the invoice is going to make a difference whether you have a question about something or not. The warrants say the school, the vendor, and the amount. So those are kind of the three things that usually make any questions jump. And then we've just, I mean, I don't know, probably for a year and a half, we've been doing warrants like this, or since we, I guess longer, since the pandemic. So that way, everything's via email, so that it's, you know, they can show that approval's been given.
Seth was emailing to give his verbal approval after his review, so...
Yeah, that, I just thought there was somebody from Corey Valley Board who was sort of that stopgap to sort of...
Well, Heather emails me every, the next day, Heather and Lori both do, for approval to sign.
Okay. Okay, I just, I just, as long as somebody's doing, I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss that, that's all.
Yeah. I mean, if something happens and somebody wants to start coming in and signing and going through the invoices, I just, I don't know. Having done that, I think just reading through the warrants is...
Yeah, no, that, no, no, that's fine. I just thought there was, yeah, the email confirmation I thought was coming from Seth, but that, that's, as long as it's covered, I, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Louis?
That's all I have for tonight.
Right, Louis isn't asking us for money, he's not telling us we've spent too much money. It's a nice report, Louis.
Have you bought the van yet?
The three special ed vans are on order. I do not have an ETA at this time.
Right. Well, it's good to know they're on order. All right, our next meeting is actually during break, and Chris had a date of April 12th.
Correct.
So that will be our next meeting.
At 6:15 is what we're looking at.
At 6:15 is what we're looking at.
I am going to be out of town for that, just as an FYI, so I probably won't be able to log on.
Okay.
And that's a Tuesday, correct, not a Monday?
Correct.
Got it, okay.
And so it would be nice if, at the April meeting, maybe we could talk about the retreat, and perhaps talk about what we would like to have, or as a board, what we would like to see as goals. We have board goals that, you know, could be continuing with one, that one goal, and maybe pick another one, or, you know, just thoughts, and maybe that could be included in the packet from last year. And then what we want to do for the board retreat, what you would like that to look like as well. And maybe people come with their calendars, so we could pick a time. And then, again, the expectation was, and we talked about this at prior meetings, about starting to look at budgets in July. And I'm hoping everyone is still okay with that. Okay. So I think that'll be good for us to start a little earlier, and particularly with new board members also. Otherwise, it's a lot to kind of wrap your brain around, so... All right, is there anything else? We have no need for executive session. If you're on, oh, that's just Mike on negotiations. GRCSU is this Wednesday, so Kristen. And if there's nothing else, a motion would be in order to adjourn at 7:24.
Make the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Second by Mike, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all very much, we'll see you in April.